Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, March 22nd, 2024. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the Council, and we're ready to begin today's meeting.
And now, actually, in Greek culture, we break plates for happiness and for humanity, and we do so very carefully. Jimmy Eliopoulos, please.
Very, very carefully.
Very carefully. Opa! Opa! Opa, for happiness and humanity. I know we had about 300 lawyers who were panicking at that moment.
And you know, like Tupac says, most of us came from a woman. We got our name from a woman, and we got our game from a woman. And so, we have to continue to uplift women in these spaces, especially when we're going to be the majority on the council soon. I'll leave that to y'all.
So, thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for all the hard work you do. I see all the shards of glass on you, where you have broken glass ceilings to make a difference. And I want to echo two things. You quoting Tupac, "We came from a woman," and also, the revenge piece, that's pretty awesome. Thank you so much.
I really just wanted to say, when I first started on this body, there were a lot fewer of us here. And actually, out in the spaces where we were operating, there were fewer of us. And bit by bit, we're coming in and we're taking over. So, thank you for bringing all these incredible badass people in here, and excited to be working with you on changing this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Padilla.
You know, I also want to thank Councilmember Hernandez for bringing together this collective of women. I know when I first started to ask myself, is Women History Month? Who are we going to bring? I know a lot of us had some of the similar ideas of who to bring in, but it looks like you took the cake with being able to get everyone here who does so much to bring change and to advocate for how to make Los Angeles a better place. So, gracias to you, y adelante to all the ladies. Let's continue to make our city better together.
Yes, I'm Kathleen Johnson, and it's item number 15.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
Thank you. I'm Kathleen Johnson with the L.A. River State Park Partners, the nonprofit support organization for L.A. State Historic Park. I support this motion to conduct a full study of transportation alternatives to Dodger Stadium before proceeding with L.A. Arts Gondola, an unsolicited enterprise with significant permanent impacts on the State Historic Park. Imposing an aerial highway through the park would negate years of community-driven activism and careful planning that transformed this brownfield into a vital urban oasis for our historically park-poor communities. The gondola's massive structures would permanently alter the park's open skies, view sheds, and landscapes, take parkland, destroy trees, and convey bus-sized cars just 26 feet over user's head. Please consider the precedence of allowing taxpayer-funded public parkland to be taken for this private use, a single-destination ride, not even a true transit project broadly serving L.A.'s commuters. There are other solutions. Please at least study them, these options, before proceeding with a project that would have such detrimental community impacts. Thank you.
I'm a resident by the gondola. My name's Phyllis Ling. I'm also the Chair of the Historic Cultural North Neighborhood Council, but I'm here speaking as an individual and founder of Stop the Gondola. I want to thank Councilmember Hernandez for her leadership. We need this traffic study, and we need the gondola project to be put on hold. I would add also that we need answers about the financial viability of this project. Where is L.A. Arts funding plan? How much would they charge tourists? How much can they get in sponsorships? They claim this is how it would be funded, so show us. Plus, there are plenty of projects like this that were promised as privately funded, got their approvals, and then needed public subsidies. The London Gondola and Portland Tran are just two examples, and those were dirt cheap compared to this $500 million boondoggle. And don't be complacent, Metro's conditions of approval don't guarantee that public funds won't be used. Those conditions just have to be met before they can start construction. If there are cost overruns during construction and L.A. Arts goes after public funds then, do you really think Metro would rescind their approvals? Please do the fiscally responsible thing, approve this motion, but also demand that L.A. Arts presents a real funding plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Hernandez for making this motion, and Councilmember Soto Martinez and Councilwoman Rodriguez for seconding it, and all of you for considering our comments and concerns today. It's been more than 30 years since a traffic study has been done for the stadium, Dodger Stadium. And in the 26 years I've lived in the neighborhood, traffic jams around the ballpark have gotten worse, and Dodger owners have done nothing about it. To think this gondola of Frank McCourt's is the best way to reduce traffic and clear the air without considering other transportation options that could be more effective is beyond irresponsible. It's magical thinking. And what's the rush? A gondola might be a cute crowd pleaser for the Olympics, but that's putting a short-term tourist attraction ahead of long-term interests of your constituents and some of the most historic parks and neighborhoods in Los Angeles. Please vote yes on this motion.
I'd just like to say that I am in support of the issue to stop the gondola. I would just like to request a meeting with Councilmember Hernandez, DOT, and Metro, because I have an alternate plan that I tried to institute regarding this in 2013. I approached Dodger Stadium about this project. So, I'd like to meet with Councilmember Hernandez, DOT, and Metro in regards to an alternative plan to this gondola. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to call up some additional names.
Hi, my name's Toni Ling. I'm speaking here in support of item number 15, the motion to support the traffic study for around Dodger Stadium. We've just been talking about children and educating children, and how important that is. So, I think it's important for us to lead by example and do our due diligence and make informed decisions based on facts. We need to do our research and support this motion for an updated traffic study, which should have been included as part of the EIR for this gondola project, you know? And there are more environmentally effective and fiscally responsible alternatives. Those do exist. We just need to do our homework, do our research. And if we really care about the children who are our future, we will, like I said, lead by example. Support the motion for the traffic study. Let's make informed decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm just here to say that I am against motion number 15. I believe that not only has L.A. Arts already done four years' worth of studying for these projects, that it's just going to be a big waste of not only taxpayer money, but time. We've had so many meetings already for this issue, and it keeps getting delayed over and over and over again. People have to keep spending their time to come to these meetings over and over again to spend and to express their opinions on it. I think this is just another way to stall for time, and it's just going to waste more of our time and money. Please say no on item number 15. Thank you.
I'm here to oppose the motion to conduct a traffic study for the gondola. The Board of Directors at Metro have approved the gondola EIR, which contained a traffic study for this project already. This motion is a big waste of money and time. I urge the Los Angeles City Council to vote no on this motion, and I support the gondola. Thank you.
I'm the Executive Director of the L.A. Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, which has 73 member neighborhood councils. We voted to oppose the gondola for many reasons. The thing about the gondola is that there's something in it to hate for everybody, but a big reason is that we are acutely aware that alternatives were not adequately addressed in the EIR. We would like a study of alternatives to be conducted before the city spends any scarce resources on advancing the gondola. The motion before us today moved more quickly than we anticipated, so neighborhood councils did not have time to get many CISs submitted, but please know that a lot were in the works. I want to thank Councilmember Hernandez for her passion and commitment on this issue. And I recall that Council President Krikorian did tell us at the Metro Board meeting that just because you, some of you approved the EIR, did not mean that you approved the gondola. So, I guess we'll get an inkling today. Thank you very much.
I'm also a member of the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, but I'm here as a resident of District 9 and as a lifelong Dodger fan, and as one who spends much time and has spent time in the areas affected by this project. I am here in solidarity to support the motion in item 15. I just feel that there are more efficient and effective ways and solutions to improve transportation in the communities affected by this project. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Gabriel. I'm a community organizer with the Wall of Las Memorias, a nonprofit based out of Boyle Heights. I just wanted to give a shout out to Councilmember Hernandez for this motion. This traffic study should have been conducted years ago, with or without this project, and I can't understand why anyone would reject this motion, even proponents of the project, unless they're scared by the probable results. I'm confident that this study will show the public what proponents of this, what opponents of this gondola have known all along, that there are more efficient and effective modes of transit that should have been considered from the start. Alternatives Metro should have considered, but unfortunately did not. McCourt's only concern is increasing his wealth, not making our air cleaner, nor reducing traffic, and Metro shouldn't have punted it to this body, but here we are. While it's disappointing that this pseudo-public transit project has gotten this far, we will not let up, and I look forward to fighting this every step of the way. Thank you.
If you've heard your name, feel free to line up. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Shamari Davis. I'm a business rep for IBW Local 11, the Electricians Union, and part of the Building Trades. While we recognize the traffic study as something that's important, we are in favor of that because we think it'll yield positive outcome. So, we are favorite of the project because it's going to be built union, and good projects that are going to be built with local higher folks is something that we should definitely get behind. I'm a Dodger fan. We do a lot of building in Dodger Stadium. I was just there this morning with some of our folks, and this is an incredible alternative for no emissions. You can't, at one point, argue and complain about traffic when you're given an alternative that's privately funded and be against that as well. You can't be, you can't complain on both sides. This is a great alternative. It's privately funded, and it's going to be built the right way with the right folks, and so, we're going to support that. But we wanted to move forward. We want all of the planning to move forward while the traffic study is happening so that we can continue to move forward with the project, because we think the traffic will have a positive outcome. So, thank you.
My name is Amy. I'm here to support the item 15. The reason is that Dodger keeps talking about how great gondolas are, but they don't mention about the damaged gondola cars. Let me tell you what they are, okay? Who can guarantee that nothing will happen to the cable car? Even Boeing, which produces some of the most famous and best airplanes in the world, has had its share of accidents. Even the world-famous Disneyland has accidents from time to time. So, who can guarantee that this gondola won't? Just last month, February 2nd, 2024, a cable caused a cable at the golf course in Taichung, Taiwan, a break, causing five people to be injured and hospitalized. Very, very fortunately, it happened in a sparsely populated golf course. If it happened in Union Station in Chinatown, on the street, in the park, in the residential area, how, can you imagine how many people will be injured and killed?
Speaker, your time has expired.
I'm living in a definitely residential area. Where is the cable car passed by? I am opposite the gondolas. It made me so nervous every day. It doesn't know when they will be fell down, and make the people could not rest and sleep because they is working for 355 days a day, 19 hours per day until to the midnight. They also occupy the only parking space in Chinatown. Makes it difficult for the real person to, you know, support for the business and travel reason to find the parking space, and got it driving Chinatown economy into the recession. Thank you.
First, I offer a huge thanks to Councilwoman Hernandez for her clear vision and bravery to speak the truth and seek the truth. The EIR was really just one huge advertisement. It's preposterous that this absurd scheme has gotten this far. Please pause the project and conduct the study, the one that should have been done in the first place. It's past time, since the last study was done 34 years ago, and much has changed since 1990, no? This is a no-brainer. Traffic aside, what this project will do to Alvera Street alone is unconscionable. So, unless you're for renaming Chinatown to McCourt Town, please support the project, pause, and traffic study. Thank you.
I'm John Christensen on item number 15. I teach and do research at the Institute of the Environment and Sustainability at UCLA, and I urge you to support a fair and objective study of traffic and transportation alternatives for Dodger Stadium. Such a fair and objective study was not done in the environmental impact report for Frank McCourt's gondola. It needs to be done. Why is L.A. Arts afraid of this? There are obvious alternative solutions which very well could be better at solving the challenges at hand: traffic congestion, greenhouse gas emissions, and electrification of our transportation system. For instance, a park-and-ride system using electric buses coming from different parts of L.A., equipped with existing technology to enable them to form platoons and get priority at traffic lights, all controlled through the cloud and dedicated lanes where appropriate, could bring fans to games, concerts, and other special events, just like at the Hollywood Bowl. The city should get an objective handle on the challenges and best solutions for Dodger Stadium.
Thank you. Herman, Candido.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on all items I signed up on.
So, you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Yeah, don't forget the donut man, Jim, okay? Don't forget. Now, secret about donut, no secret at all, because you know on item 22, beautifying areas of Los Angeles suck. 23, motion, fuck you. Then, on 24, homeless housing, nigga. Fred Carter, Judge, today at 1:00 P.M. will speak about assistance prevention from you, asshole, because you do not provide veteran housing and enough housing for the people in this arena who wish to have affordable housing. No, permanent housing, asshole. You, stupid, listen. Yeah, I am nice, but not to stupidness. Item 24, fuck you. Then, on item 21, Mr. Soto in Makakas. Makakas, sir. Yeah, you, lady, I can't see the man, you're too big. Please step aside. Regarding service in connection for relative funding for service recognition, District 15, no, fuck District 15. Angel City football is what we need. No, we need housing accountability and an audit by the Judge Carter to ensure that everybody gets not a football club, but permanent housing to the approval of the mayor who fucked up on this Angel City. Item 15, ganja la. Support ganja la? Fuck ganja la. Dodgers don't support me. I can't afford Dodger game. Why, asshole, like you, want to support ganja la? So, you could float, float, float to the stadium where you kicked out all the wetbacks like me so you could build Dodger Stadium? Fuck you. You understand me now. Totally American citizen, and I want item motion 15 to stop now and provide every wetback like me a donut box for free money, for free ganja la, and no rides because the Dodgers are a criminal enterprise, forfeiting their pitcher, their best player from Tokyo to support gambling. Fuck you. So, in my closing arguments on my rebuttal, we don't need free shit. We don't need anything on this agenda that doesn't support the public's welfare. What we need is the people of America to stand up to this criminal organization in Los Angeles, 42SC 1983 politely, fuck you.
Thank you. And just to folks who haven't, don't normally come to council, we apologize for the racist accents that some people do and the horribly racist comments that they make, but it is, we are required to listen to this trash sometimes, so we have to do it. So, next speaker, Mr. Spindler. Don't disappoint.
You have three minutes for the items.
Yes, all the fucking cocksucker items and general comment. Aren't you glad somebody like me rational is speaking? Yes. So, we look at number 15, a fucking gondola going over people's homes. For what? To transport these rich, pasty, white cocksucker citizens up the fucking hill to their box seats so they could smoke their cigars and take their cocaine and gamble on sports, where the rest of us poor people have to watch it on Spectrum? Fuck Spectrum. And the rest of these fucking people, what about the Dodger scandals? Do you want to support a project like this where their $700 million bitch might be gambling? No, they're under investigation, the Dodgers. UNISAS definitely wants a suspension of this terrible corrupt project. Who fucking paid you off to even bring this shit before us? Why are the parking lots owned by that miserable cocksucker from Boston, Frank McC-K-K-Court?
So, Mr. Spindler, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Agree with you, yes, boo to the fucking gondola. Thank you for that support. Number 16, Richard Katz. What a filthy little cocksucker he is. And he was Bob Burbet Bleod's commissioner on the redistricting commission, remember, Bob? When he made the deal with Nuri to redistrict your commission? Richard Katz was Bob Bleben Bleod's secret agent that drew all of our fucking council lines and put Nithya Ram and Nudel in and Sino and took and fucking stole all the homeless and gave it to UNISAS out of CD14, remember, Bob? What, you want to promote him to the Board of Water Commissioners? What a good idea. Let's put somebody who could later be investigated on an investigative panel. Boy, you people are fucking geniuses. Let me see if I have any text messages from the feds this morning. Oh, yes, as a matter of fact, you're going to be due at 1:00 in Judge Carter's courtroom, Bob. Make sure you show up. Thank you, FBI. Now, we get to number 17. Fuck number 17. I tricked you there, Bob, yes. 21, fuck number 21. I don't want to illuminate City Hall. I want to turn the lights out permanently on this fucking place and close it down and turn it into a homeless shelter. What do you say, yes? Thank you, UNISAS. I'll be back to tell the city council to fuck off on general. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The item on the gondola, and then public comments later on, correct?
Yes, so you have one minute for item 15. Please begin.
Thank you, sir. I'll keep it short after that. Mr. Hernandez, I've been watching, keeping an eye on you since you were elected, and I'm very proud to say that I think you really are going to do a good job to represent your community, and that's what's happening right here. Some people are for it, some are against it. The thing is, oh, you're doing the right thing, and I believe the study, you know, will bring answers that we need to see. My question, though, is, I just hope the gondola isn't destroyed by those taggers that some of the people here like to call victims. This could be something very beautiful and special, and we need to protect it. Here we are, another building in Los Angeles that's being destroyed, and to hear, to hear some of the residents say they like it? You know, whatever happened to the broken window syndrome, right? How about now we call it the broken mind, broken heart? Because if you don't love this city and you allow taggers to shit down the neck of this great city, and excuse my language for using a bad word, then we've got a problem. But I want to thank you for doing what you're doing for your community. Thank you, ma'am. Look forward to seeing you.
Item 15 and general public comment.
Good afternoon. You have one minute for item 15. Please begin.
General public comment, too.
So, we're not currently doing general public comment?
That's so fucked up.
You have one minute for item 15.
I'm sorry. Item 15, I'm supporting.
Counselor, I'll do number 15.
Okay, so you have one minute.
As a proud conservative Republican, Honorable Hernandez, you're doing a very good job. I know that's a shock, but it does happen. One thing you need to ask is, when I was talking to council, and she didn't know about my legal background, I asked her about the fire code, the state fire code, and the Court of Appeal decision regarding the issue, and that would affect the gondola. She knew about it, and she did not like what I said. That's something that you need to focus on. Don't ask the wrong question to get the right answer. Ask about the fire code. I will do an amicus curi brief at a certain point if it does passes, but the fire code cannot be exempt. That's an absolute, it's called matter of law, right, Counselor? It's called matter of law. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items and...
You have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Okay. Mike Greenspan and, yes, ho, 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 we're out here being very generous with the taxpayer money, as usual. Well, let's go look at some of the first ones, because there's always stuff in this. Oh, what's that one about the thing in Council District 1? I know UNISAS is doing a good job. Sidia'd be out getting his dick wet, but this time, we're talking about pride. Yes, queer pride. We aren't even in June, and we're out there doing the queer pride stuff. How wonderful. I hope that if you're going to have the thing in District 1 for queer pride, at least you honor Ron Smith this year for his 70th birthday. He's that white trash that used to let a queer suck his dick for cigarettes and just for one pack. I'm out there to get him a pay raise. How dare we allow blowjobs for compensation to be sub-minimum wage? I don't care what you do, but pay a decent wage. We must think money grows on trees. Well, oh, it's nice to see that we're going to have no ruse coming up, or at least came up, because I do think one day, our next ethnic group to be represented on the city council will probably be of Persian descent. I've often thought that, because the people who left, when the Shah left and the Islamic Republic came in, they ended up out here. They're the professional class, the entrepreneur class, and the people that were smart enough to get out of there. One day, they're going to be on the, someone's going to be on the city council for that. As far as all these $400 light expenditures, I hate to break the news to you. We can't afford them. About all we can afford with our budget coming up in next fiscal year, between $350 and $400 million in the red, are going to be these jerk-off resolutions that don't cost anything. You know, guys jerk your dicks, gals play with your puss, but we don't have any money to run this stuff. But guess what I brought today, just for you, Mr. Bloomingfield? The gloves to pick the money off the trees for these projects we can't afford, those good old-fashioned Jewish money trees, because, God, remember, they've been fertilized with queer rabbi come, so let's pick that money off the trees to pay these bills, because right now, we are dealing in imaginary money. You're just lucky you have Kenneth Mahia as controller. I would not be paying 10 cents of this stuff if I were controller. We don't have the money, and you guys would be getting paper paychecks. Why? Because when you don't have the money, at least you could use them to wipe your ass.
Okay, thank you. Lovely cap. I don't know if it's a Christmas cap or a dunce cap, but either way. Next, we're going to move to the phones. We have time for 10 minutes on the phones.
Hey, what's good? Can y'all hear me?
Yes. Which items would you like to speak to?
Can you tell me what items are available and also general public comment?
So, the items that are open for public comment currently are 11 through 26.
All right, cool. And then also bring me back a public comment like how you did last time, please. So, all available items and also that later on.
So, you have three minutes for the items. You're welcome.
All right, so we got a couple items here to light up City Hall. $400 apiece. I think it's really interesting. I've been paying attention, not for that long, but it's been a few years now. It doesn't get any cheaper to light up City Hall for bullshit fucking virtue signals, diseases that people have to suffer from, while the city does nothing to help those people. I think it's one of them, like endometriosis is one of the things they're lighting up City Hall for. At the same time, they're also going to be lighting up City Hall for, I think, the Angel City Football Club. That's cool, I guess. It's just, how many times have we lit up City Hall just to, for people, for council members to take pictures and post on their Instagrams and for the city to look like they give a fuck? And that costs $400 a time, and half the time, we're passing motions that are like four acknowledgements, $400 at a time, you know? That's $1,600 right there, and we've done this dozens and dozens and dozens of times since I've been paying attention to city council meetings, and I've only been paying attention for a few years now. So, we... So we've literally spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars lighting up City Hall for bullshit that most of the city can't even see, because most of the city don't live near City Hall. There's these, uh, REAP items, they're taking properties off of REAP. Again, look at who owned these properties, look at why would they be taking the property off of REAP? You know, REAP isn't really, I don't really give a fuck much about REAP, I feel like it's bullshit anyway, but at the same time, why, if it's bullshit, why would they take a property off of REAP? Who owns it? All that nonsense. Um, I think we have another item here about the gondola. Uh, you can hear constantly there's these projects for infrastructure quote-unquote that are really just tourist traps that the city locals usually, uh, push against while they're advocating for things like high-speed heavy rail. And the city, the city just lets them pour their hearts out into a vacuum and they empty that bag out into the fucking trash because they really don't fucking listen. And you're gonna put a gondola, a fucking gondola. Wh- wh- where's the outcry for a gondola? Who's, who's been clamoring for a fucking gondola? You know what people are clamoring for? More consistent, more buses, more bus routes, more free public transportation, not things that are gonna be cute for the Olympics and for a fucking event. And the locals won't even have like, they can't even use, it's not like we can use it for free and people from out of town have to pay. No, it's gonna cost the same for us that it costs for people that are from Saudi Arabia that are in town for the Olympics. So just think about that, you know, while you're making these cute little projects to dress up the city in time for some international event that no one that lives in the city that makes under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year can afford to go fucking see. Think about that when the people are, are, are holding you fucking above the highway or whatever the people are gonna do with you. Mind you, I'm not violent, you know, I'm warning you.
Speaker, your time has expired, next caller?
Can you hear me?
Yes, which items would you like to speak to?
We're gonna do eleven, this is Richard Serrano, District Six. Uh, we're gonna go to eleven, fifteen, and twenty, uh, but let me do fifteen last.
You have three minutes for the items, please begin.
And, and public comment, so, uh, let's go with, uh, number eleven. Antonio, you're here talking about keeping the violence away from the schools. Emilia Padilla is allowing a homeless building to be built on Victory Boulevard by Birmingham High School. But if she would've went to Lake Baboah's meeting, she would've found this information out. She looks surprised, I can see. They're also gonna do, now we're going to the pay by, uh, you know, finishing up Nuri Martinez's, uh, pay-to-play kind of situation. We're building all those apartment buildings in the San, uh, Sepulveda Basin. Guess who's gonna be getting the work? Wonder who's gonna be LA Federal, uh, Labor Union? All these lobbyists that are in here talking to you people, there's a reason they're there because somebody got, uh, elected through their donations. And this is what the sad part about City Hall, that they don't pay attention to this stuff until it's too late or they're incriminated. Number eleven, I'm, excuse me, let's go to twenty. Illumination. I don't understand why you guys take the time to illuminate anything when you have people, National Ladies' Day, you guys didn't pay attention to one of the ladies that were in there. I didn't know what they were there for, PETA, the animal control. I just know that it was National Ladies' Day and everyone was on the phone or in the back chamber. No one paying attention to them. So why do you put certain articles up and act like you really care about something when you don't? Unless it's bringing money to your pockets? It makes no sense to me. You guys are all talking about budget control. Fifteen district council people making two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Albert, uh, from LA Unified School District making four-hundred thousand. Not once did I hear, hey, maybe we should take a cut in pay to get our budget through. Not once. Because you don't care about the people, you care about yourselves. Number fifteen, the gondola. It's got Paul Kacorian all over this, this is gonna fly through no matter what. The courts did nothing for the city when they bought Dodgers. And when they let it go, they kept half of that parking lot. That's a hundred and thirty acres up there. He owns half of it. He's making, uh, gondola to get to his million-dollar view homes that he's gonna turn around and build later. There, there's nothing there that he's giving away, he's just benefiting from the city, but everyone's too blind to see around the light, lurk between the lines. All those lobbyists in there, Mike Torres coming in and said, oh, for your city, he don't even live in LA. All these people are here to make money out of LA, nothing for the community. That light rail, again lobbyists. Who got you elected? Let's finish that program up, get those people paid that got me elected. How much money was spent?
Caller, your time has expired.
I was at the Metro Board meeting exactly one month ago, where hundreds of CD One constituents were strongly opposed to the project and made their voices heard. And many of them are here with us today, asking us to seek real solutions, not boost a billionaire's pet project. Colleagues, I ask that you do right by my constituents. Please allow us to do this traffic study and look at all the possible solutions, and I urge your eye vote on this motion. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven, aye, two noes.
Very good. Uh, thank you, that will bring us next to item number sixteen. Thank you. Thank you all very much for being with us. Uh, we're gonna proceed now with the, the continuing work of the council, so item number sixteen is next.
All items?
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, please begin.
Mike Greenspan? Yes, um, I see number twenty-eight about the, um, climate pollution reduction grants program. Is that like the smog scam about selling smog credits? You have an excess amount of smog things you can use and you sell half the credits to somebody else? What a scam. Now, let's go to twenty-nine about the, um, thing with, uh, sexual exploitation of children. Folks, as long as we got Catholic churches around with Catholic schools, what a bunch of shit. I mean, what about those priests that are always fucking the children?
Speak to the agenda items, or you're done.
Yes, we're talking about sex with children and priests are some of the biggest.
Okay, you're done, you're done. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, you have three minutes for the items.
Okay, I go, I thought, not a, I thought, total, ay. Comment on the question, mayor, general manager for Metro Nigga, I against the other papa. The people do not have the other item. Then, number total nine, Vafa to city legislator, to city children creating consequence, exploitation children. First of all, put the kids in private school and do not have the mother divorce the father. Keep the father to raise the kid so they do not become little nigger. We do not want little nigger. We want good little kid. But no sexual act minor, no more exploitation of minor, no more prostitute for minor. Okay, John Lee, no more masseuse. Number thirty, fucking bill, Senate bill, Newman. Newman from Seinfeld would provide law enforcement sheet for undercover operation. This is very good. One thing we do in my country, uh, China, is we take young, thin women that look like little.
Speak to the agenda item, Mr. Spindler.
But, but you, you, you are a minion cocksucker, I tried to.
Okay, you're off the agenda, have a seat. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Sit down, next speaker, please. Come on up, Mr. Herman, speak to the agenda items.
Good afternoon, you have three minutes for the items.
What items?
That's items twenty-eight through thirty-six.
So I'm on item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five and thirty-six, is that correct? Are those the items?
You may speak to the items.
Okay, so that way the Zion can understand me better. Good. This bud's for you. So, now, regarding a Senate bill, eleven-twenty-eight, how do you not explain the exploitation of sexual immorality in this world of children? When television, newspapers, TikTok, and all these organizations that you allow the exploitation of children? Why is that? It's the same as, as my, what I have in my hand. You exploit us to more alcohol as a convenient and necessity. So we look at this unlawful sexual acts against a minor or children, the act of the city of Los Angeles is the cause. Once again, cause, reaction. Cause, reaction. And why is that? Then we talk about the Assembly Bill twenty-four-nineteen, Mr. Gibson, of current challenges faced of law enforcement. Well, we already know what the NWA says, fuck the police. Then we go to thirty-five regarding administrative officer, bargaining units, airport peace officers. Well, don't we have a problem with, with dumb-dumb forty-six said about the illegals coming into our country and no one checking the passports? What good is it to have police or airport peace officers who can't do a goddamn thing to prevent, stop dumb-dumb forty-six from letting illegals? Isn't that the word he used in his fucking bullshit sermon? Then I go to thirty-six, cocksucker, pink-faced dick, regarding MOU.
You're off the agenda, speak to the agenda, you're done.
Born solely on Los Angeles World Airport. Again, twenty-eight, sixty-five, pink face absorbed by Los Angeles Police Department. And as I said on another item, fuck the police. Niggers with attitude don't get shit done right. So as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, you're not speaking to the agenda, have a seat, Mr. Herman. Okay, have a seat, that will close, uh, comment here in the council chambers. We'll take five minutes of phone calls.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven is related to housing beds, and I just wanna ask, where is that forty-one-eighteen report? Um, for thirty and thirty-one, this is on prostitution, and, um, I just think it's inappropriate for somebody that was involved in potentially getting escorts in exchange for, you know, official acts, but just weird stuff to have them voting on something like this. I know they've alluded that they were not a participant, but, um, if we're talking about awareness and prevention, um, somebody in the same fucking hotel room should maybe speak up. And item thirty-five, Mr. Kacorian, um, I'm just so amazed to see this, this item just rail through. It's stuffed as a special agenda a day in advance, when the report was dropped forty-eight hours before the meeting. This is just amazing. And then you stick it after your little closed session just to make sure as few people as possible can talk about it as possible, because you protect the boys in blue. And I, I find it really weird that this report says that LAPD and Department of Parks and Rec are gonna absorb some of the cost. They're, like, LAPD's a hundred million over budget, where they got to absorb? Give my time.
General public comment will be short today. Good afternoon, you have one minute.
Snyder versus Phelps, God hates you, you're going to hell, priests rape boys. Don't you dare tell the public that priests don't rape boys. Because we know that Israel send bombs to kill children in Hamas. The same way Bob Bloomfield paid that fat mayor aide back in twenty-eighteen, one-oh-six dash one-twenty point twenty-seven, and twenty-nineteen, one-one-four dash one-one-five point sixty-eight, and that fucking fat pig, oink, oink, Corretts received for his aide, one-twenty-two, four, two-forty-nine, point seventy-two. So at a deficit of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight million, you dumb niggers don't get it right. So on Fish Friday, don't let the cum come into your mouth with yellow fish, but so long, nigger.
Next.
Your time has expired, next speaker.
And you're violating our rules with that sign, so put it down. Next, next.
Good afternoon, you have one minute.
Yes, Mike Greenspan, the Jew who won't go back to Florida, you fish eaters. Anyway, it's Friday, you know what that means? Clam chowder from God's garbage bin to Cantor's Deli in Council District Five and all the delicatessens like your Brent's or your, well, what used to be Soli's, no more, or wherever. Because of that false lie about going to hell for eating meat on Friday, we have clam chowder. Now remember, when all these animal, these sea animals that are bad to eat, pick up your Bible, Leviticus eleven, you'll find the creatures are creatures that God says not to eat because they're bottom feeders. And remember, if you're gonna have clam chowder at Jewish deli, get it with queer Rabbi cum. Thank you.
Next call, uh, next speaker?
Alright, wishing all you criminals a very, very happy holiday. And we got, let's see, Tracy Criminal, thank you for staying, indicted current price criminal, thank you for staying, Hugo Soto-Stalin, thank you for staying, Pumpkinhead, thank you for staying. Thank you for fucking me out of my time. Thank you for being criminals. Thank you for being cocksuckers. You have so much to thank, but you're all going to face the same God. And what's the petty pink skin gonna do? The petty pink skin is gonna go to hell and you know it. Bleeb Bob and Bleod's gonna go to hell, he won't accept Jesus. And then you got Stafford B. John Lee, who will not pay his ethics violation and ask for the help of Jesus. So we're gonna leave Marquisie alone today because he's been tortured all week. Finally, Stafford B., will you buy Alexis a new car? That car looks like crap, give her a new car.
Your time has expired, sergeants, do we have any other public speakers?
Okay, that'll.